Alrighty, let's get started. We ask for the courtesy of board members, staff, and members of the public that you please silence your cell phones. Good afternoon and welcome to the Orange County School Board's Rural Development Workshop and Work Session for Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. During the Rural Development Workshop portion of this meeting, the school board will only be hearing public comments on school board policy I H A R, digital learning, which is being recommended for repeal. Because this is not a regularly scheduled school board meeting, there will be no non-agenda period in which the public normally addresses the school board on your name, your main topics that are related to the work of the board. Should you wish to address the school board on another topic, please do so at the next regularly scheduled school board meeting, which will be this evening. Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. The work session portion of today's meeting has been scheduled for the purpose of discussing the following: Proposed Revisions to School Board Policies J B, Educational Equal Educational Opportunities, J C A, Assignment of Students to School, J F B D, Magnet School Programs, and F E F P Review. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because this is the school board's opportunity to work with staff. Once final direction is provided, we will follow the policy revision process set forth in Chapter 120, Florida Statutes. Board members are intending in person with the exception, obviously, of Chair Jacobs, who is on her way here. As a reminder, board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting, so we can focus on the matters immediately before us. To my fellow board members, district staff, and members of the public when speaking, please make sure your microphone is turned on and speak directly into it, so our YouTube and Orange TV viewers can hear you clearly. Again, thank you so much for participating in or attending today's meeting. Now for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start the Rural Development Workshop portion of the meeting to discuss school board policy I H A R, digital learning recommended for repeal. Presenters are James Russo, Senior Executive Director of Curriculum and Digital Learning, and Marcy Willer, Senior Director of Digital Learning. Dr. Armbruster, it's all yours.
We're gonna go ahead and jump right in. James, thank you.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Gallo, School Board Members, and Deputy Superintendent Armbruster. During today's work session, we are prepared to discuss school board policy I H A R. This policy was put in place to create a framework for implementing a digital learning program in 2015. Since that time, we have met the goal of providing all students in O C P S with access to a blended learning environment. In recent months, the policy has been reviewed to determine if I H A R still meets the needs of O C P S as a standalone policy. Today, we will be presenting the tentative schedule, summary of actions, proposed revisions, next steps, and reserve time for questions and discussion. The tentative schedule for board policy I H A R is as follows, with today, June 11th, 2024, being the Rural Development Workshop, followed by school board approval on June 25th, 2024, with an effective date upon approval. Based on updates to Florida statute and the review of I H A R with multiple departments, this policy has been recommended for repeal. O C P S had the opportunity through the Launched Ed Program to provide all schools with devices. Since fully becoming one-to-one in 2020, the focus of digital learning has moved from rollout to sustainment. Along the way, processes have been developed to wrap digital learning into the way of work in O C P S. It is recommended that policy I H A R digital learning be repealed. The original policy was developed under the 2011 Digital Learning Now Act. Many of the policy provisions are outdated, while others are included in areas such as the Code of Student Conduct, other policies, and within management directives. We now will walk through each section of the current policy and discuss the red lines. Within Section 1, I H A R outlines the 2011 Digital Learning Now Act, which established virtual school options for all students. The elements listed within Florida statute 1,002.321 are embedded within our way of work, and the statute solidifies this continued practice. Section 2 contains definitions developed by district staff almost 10 years ago. While some definitions are still valid, most would need to be removed entirely or revised to reflect the district's current implementation of its digital learning program. Necessary common language is now found within management directives, Code of Student Conduct, and other policies, which will be discussed more in depth in other sections. Moving through the red lines, we will now continue to Section 3. Section 3 addresses digital materials and provides guidance for managing Career and Professional Education Act, or CAPE, digital tools and industry certifications. Career and Technical Education, CTE, currently supports, implements, monitors, and provides state reports on these items. These certifications are tied to CTE-supported courses provided throughout the district. Computer Science Access is discussed in Section 4. Computer Science courses are offered at schools throughout the district per F L D O E requirements. Computer Science Competencies are connected with specific courses or part of practices within the curricular scope and sequence. Section 5 focuses on digital literacy. House Bill 379 mandates that students in grades 6 through 12 complete an F L D O E-provided curriculum that addresses internet and social media safety. This update will replace the requirement within this policy. In addition, digital literacy lessons will remain a part of the district curriculum resource materials. Section 6 contains information for supporting keyboarding skills. Typing software has become a standard purchase since the implementation of the District One-to-One Initiative. It is also not common practice to embed a requirement for a specific skill within a policy. In an effort to establish keyboarding skills, references will be made within the O C P S curriculum resource materials to support state expectations for typed student responses. School sites will still be able to track usage. With respect to Section 7, Use of Network Resources, similar information is included on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Student Conduct for Students and Management Directive A 09, Employee Use of Technology. The Children's Internet Protection Act compliance located in Section 8 is addressed in Policies E H B, Data and Record Retention, and E H B A, Record Management, Public Records. In addition, it is found in Management Directive A 09, Employee Use of Technology, and A 15, Employee Responsibility in the Proper Use of Sensitive Data. Section 9, Home Internet Filtering, this information is included on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Conduct. Section 10, Cheating and Plagiarism, this information is included on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Student Conduct. Section 11, Copyright, this information is included on Page 36 of the O C P S Code for Student Conduct, Management Directive B 07, Use of Copyrighted Materials, and Board Policy E G A B, Duplication of Copyrighted Materials. Section 12, Identity Theft, this information is on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Student Conduct. Section 13, Asset Management, this information is already included in Board Policy D I D, Inventories and Property Records. Section 14, Social Media, this section contradicts Florida statute and current legislative efforts mentioned in Senate Bill 258 and House Bill 379. Section 15, Appropriate Use of District Assigned Email Addresses for Students, this information is found within the O C P S Code of Student Conduct on Page 36. Section 16, Content on District-Owned Devices, this information is on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Student Conduct. Section 17, Cloud-Based Storage, this information is on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Student Conduct. The Searching of District-Owned Devices and Files is in Section 18 for Staff. This is addressed in Management Directive A 09, Employee Use of Technology, and for Students. This information is on Page 36 of the O C P S Code of Student Conduct. Section 19 outlines the Support for Instructional Use of Technology. The cited statute focuses on professional learning. Professional learning information outlined within this section is addressed within the CTA Contract on Page 35. Within I H A R digital learning, the Bring Your Own Device, B Y O D, requirement from 2015 are outlined. The district has developed processes for this practice. As technology has changed over the last nine years, the B Y O D program has evolved in its requirements and allowances. Rather than updating the policy each time there is a change, this section is recommended for repeal. Resources for B Y O D can be found in the Launched Ed Toolkit that is shared with school personnel, as well as on the O C P S website. This concludes our review of the red lines. We will now continue to next steps. Our next steps are to obtain input from the public on the proposed revisions at today's Rural Development Workshop, along with any additional guidance from the school board. Now, we'll turn it back over to Dr. Armbruster and Vice Chair Gallo.
Any questions or statements?
Yes, we do have a speaker prior to calling on Member Gould. Are there any members of the public, Mrs. Invall, that wishes to speak to the board?
No, Madam Vice Chair, there's not.
All right, thank you. Member Gould?
Um, yes, I had a question, not so much about it being in the policy, but keyboarding. How are we teaching our students to keyboard? And is it built into the curriculum at a certain grade?
Is it keyboarding clubs?
Typing club. I knew it was close. So, we have a typing club app that we have had, and we continue to purchase since we went to the one-to-one devices. And with the change and review of this policy, one of the things we are looking to implement for this coming year is to have some intentional connections to allow that typing club to prepare students, now that a lot of the responses are expected to be done on a keyboard.
Okay, that's what I thought. That honestly is something that I would like staff to look into more, is making it more embedded into curriculum, because that is the one criticism that I hear from every single student, is I've never been taught to type. And so, when they get out into the workforce world, especially if they end up working in any kind of an office situation, or want to aspire to do that, they don't have that skill. And so that is something, when we are handing out computers, I think we should absolutely be teaching and embedding into the curriculum. The second is, some of the items that you had in the policy, which I know are in Code of Conduct and in other areas, but are going to have whole new meaning in the AI world, like cheating and plagiarism, copyright, there's another one, but those two in particular, how will we handle that going forward? Because I know we're going to have a subcommittee that's going to be reviewing AI implementations, but in the meantime, people are already using it. So, how is that covered when, is it just in the Code of Student Conduct, or where else are we kind of covering what those rules are?
So, twofold. One is, it is in the Code of Student Conduct. The second thing is, there is a committee task force to look at all the AI products. Marcy is one of the people that sit on that committee, so we've been evaluating what we have in-house already, and functions of those, those resources. So, there's a number of different AI tools, and also that includes teacher training on those tools. So, we've been talking about how to make sure that teachers are aware. Now, as far as the plagiarism check and things along those lines, in secondary, one of the items that we've been looking at is My Access for 6th and above, which does have a plagiarism tool in there. And then, working with the I T S team, I think we'll continue to get, one, make sure students are informed on how to use that, teachers know how to use these tools in their classroom, and three, how do we monitor for authentic work versus plagiarized work?
Thank you, Member Frant.
Thank you. So, I would love to just touch base on the typing. I think that really is a huge need. Something that I have recently heard of, which I think is phenomenal, and maybe a suggestion, would be doing like some sort of wheel class, they called it, where in 6th grade, students typically they get the three electives, I believe, in 6th grade. So, one of those would be just a wheel class that every 6th grader has to take. One quarter is typing. And I thought it was fantastic. A friend of mine was sharing that their child is at a school that does this. So, one quarter is typing, one was research and debate, one was, now I don't remember what all of them were. I'll look it up. But I think the typing part of that, I thought, was very critical, especially if we are giving every child a computer. I think it's huge. And maybe it isn't just in 6th grade, but definitely would be cool to have something like that, where students are getting that. I know another one was personal finance, where kids are understanding how to save money, that sort of thing. So, anyways, that's just a little thought on the typing part. But my question was with the, let's see, it's on page, I don't even know what page this is, but page 10, maybe? Slide 10. It says the Children's Internet Protection Act compliance located in Section 8. And it really is just addressing the data and records retention, records management. Is this also, because when I look it up online, it's more about children having access to obscene or harmful content over the internet. Is that also the same thing? Are we just taking part of it? Or maybe more clarification on that section?
So, the home internet filtering?
It's the child's, not above that, Section 8. It said the Children's Internet Protection Act compliance located in Section 8 is addressed in Policies. So, you're, so it's that, but you're saying, so, I just want to understand the page. I guess I'm just confused by that. Are we removing that, or it's just those two sections are pertaining to the act?
Yeah, the other piece of that is the web filtering, which is not managed under this policy, but, oh, did I turn it off? What about now?
There we go, yes.
Get real close. All right. I think the other piece of that has to do with the web filtering that is supported through our I T S department. So, it's not necessarily encompassed in this policy, but is part of practice.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Frant. Seeing no more questions, we are going to move into the work session portion of today's meeting, which is Item 4.02. Thank you so much for all that you all have done. We appreciate it.
It would be web filtering, which is supported through our I T S. So, that is in place, but it is not necessarily contained under a specific policy, to my knowledge.
So, we're going to give Ms. Cowens and Ms. Figuera a few minutes, just to get, Figueroa, I had it right the first time, in my mind. Just a few minutes to get to the table. They will be joined by Captain David Reinhardt, District Police, and discussing school board policy J B, Equal Educational Opportunities. Dr. Armbruster.
Okay. Are we ready, Ms. Cowen? Okay, we're going to turn it over to you. Thank you.
You gotta get close. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you. I normally have a loud voice, so I typically lean back from the mic, because I feel like I'm too loud. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Gallo, School Board Members, Deputy Superintendent Armbruster. My name is Keisha Cowens, and I am a staff attorney, and I also serve as the district's EEO officer, Equity Officer, and Title IX Coordinator. For purposes of today, I'm here to talk to you about school board policy J B, and I'm being joined by Melanie Figueroa. She is our Cleary Act Compliance Coordinator, and we have Captain David Reinhardt with me as well. We will be talking to you about board policy J B. I'm going to go over the agenda with you. We will talk about the tentative schedule for the policy, the summary of actions. We will go over the proposed revisions, next steps, and then if you have any questions or discussion items, we will take those as well. The policies were presented to Cabinet on June 3rd and June 10th, because we do have two other policies coming before the board today. Policy J F B D went with J B on June 3rd at Cabinet, and Policy J C A went to Cabinet yesterday on June 10th. We are here today at the work session, and we are scheduled for a Rural Development Workshop on July 16th, and we are set for board approval on July 30th, and the effective date for the policies would be upon approval. The reason we're here with the proposed revisions for board policy J B involves additional language to comply with the 2024 amendments to the Department of Education's Regulations Regarding Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. As well as, you will see, we've added a new section with language to comply with the Gene Cleary Act of Campus Security Policy and Campus Crime Statistics Act, and the Violence Against Women Act. At this time, I will take you through the red lines on the Title IX section of the policy. So, as you all will see with the policy that was provided to you, there are a number of red lines, removing a lot of language under the Title IX section of the policy. And the reason for this, the reason for this is because on April 19th, 2024, the Department of Education released the 2024 amendments to Title IX. And when looking at the proposed recommendations from the Department of Education, they have an implementation date of August 1st, 2024. We realize that our policy is very procedure-based. After the regulations were released on April 19th, several states did file lawsuits challenging the implementation of those regulations. And currently, those, one of those particular lawsuits is set for hearing next month. And so, in order to streamline our process and to provide the board and the district with some flexibility regarding Title IX, since we are unclear as to what will happen with those hearings, we are with those hearings, we are proposing removing the procedural language from the policy and, um, keeping the language in here that I will go over with you. It's six paragraphs to let the public know and the district know about our compliance with Title IX. We are closely monitoring the hearings, um, and those lawsuits that have been filed and we will proceed with, um, implementing the procedures based upon the outcome of those lawsuits. So I'll start you with the very first paragraph that you see on the screen where it tells you that OCPS does not discriminate on the basis of sex and we prohibit sex discrimination in any education program or activity that we operate, um, as required by Title IX. So this is the overview paragraph to let everyone know that we will comply with Title IX. We've removed the language, several paragraphs under it. If you look now, um, the next paragraph, it talks about the procedures that we have implemented, um, in order to comply with a fair and equitable resolution of any complaints that are made by either students, employees, or anyone who is attempting to participate in our education program or activity. The current policy has our procedures in it already, so we do have procedures in place to comply with the 2020 regulations. What the plan will entail is that once this policy revision is approved, we are putting together a procedures guide, which will have all of our procedures in there and that will be linked on our website and it will be provided to schools. If the 2020 regulations remain intact, those procedures are already ready to go, we'll just have them on the website. If the 2024 regulations move forward with their implementation date of August 1st, new procedures are being, uh, will be created, I'm sorry, that will comply with the 2024 regulations and that procedures guide will be on the website. So that is what this section is referring to. Section two identifies the district Title IX Coordinator, which is the position that I hold, notifying the public that the district Title IX Coordinator is responsible for ensuring OCPS's compliance with Title IX. We, um, at OCPS, we have school-based Title IX coordinators on each of our campuses, actually two. Each principal designates one school-based coordinator and they designate a backup school-based Title IX coordinator, so that there are at least two people trained on every campus who can conduct Title IX investigations and assist with Title IX compliance at our schools. So this portion of the policy identifies the school-based Title IX coordinator. The next section identifies that any person can report a complaint of harassment based on Title IX. It does not have to be the complainant or the alleged victim. Any person is allowed the opportunity to present that complaint. Um, so we give the information about who they should report it to, the district Title IX Coordinator, those school-based Title IX coordinators that I mentioned, and this report can come in any form, email, mail, a handwritten letter dropped off at the school via telephone, it can be an oral complaint. We will take the complaint however it is received and OCPS will proceed with investigating those allegations once they're brought to the school's attention or the district's attention. And the last paragraph that we have included in the updated version of the policy, um, identifies and mandates for our employees, the OCPS employees, that they are required to report any allegations of harassment to either the district Title IX Coordinator, the school-based Title IX Coordinator, or the appropriate district administrator in the event that they are unclear as to who the Title IX Coordinator is on their campus. The remaining information in this section of the policy for Title IX compliance has been read and lined through because as I mentioned, those are the procedures. So the new version of the policy is six paragraphs long. And that concludes my portion for Title IX. Vice Chair Gallo, I'm not sure if you want to take questions on the Title IX piece now?
Yes. Let's, let's stop and see if there's any questions because I know that next piece is quite in-depth. Are there any questions on the Title IX from any board members? All right. Seeing none, we can move along.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hello.
All right. Hello, members of the board and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Armbruster and counsel. My name is Melanie Figueroa. I'm the Administrator for Clery Act Compliance for Orange Technical College. Uh, today I am pleased to introduce a new section to the JB policy that reflects requirements within federal law. The proposed changes to JB include the Clery Act and Violence Against Women Act, as those requirements are similar. The purpose of the Clery Act is to provide timely, accurate, and complete information about crime and campus safety. The Act mandates annual disclosures of crime statistics, highlighting institutional policy, procedures, and practices, and it aims to educate and empower parents, students, prospective students, prospective employees by making them aware of crimes on or around campus, uh, to promote transparency and safety, allowing the campus community to make informed decisions about keeping themselves safe. The Clery Act applies only to post-secondary institutions, large, small, public or private, uh, that participate in Title IV funding, i.e., Pell Grants, uh, with the exception of institutions that are solely in the online format. The Department of Education Clery Compliance Division oversees and enforces the Clery Act. A couple of highlights, the policy is to formalize the Clery Act compliance to Orange Technical College. Everything within this policy, uh, will meet the requirements of federal law and again, it only pertains to Orange Technical College. The definitions that you see in front of you, uh, I wanted to highlight a few. The Annual Security Report and/or ASR, it's a comprehensive document that provides an overview of our safety policies and procedures and is really a, um, education resource for our campus community to promote, excuse me, to promote awareness of crime and campus safety. Due to our uniqueness, OCPS District Police is a secondary agency and we rely on our law enforcement officers of jurisdiction. Uh, the policy will refer to campus police, but again, that refers to our law enforcement, um, officers of jurisdiction. Studies have shown that if a person is a victim of a crime, that they're likely not to report to a law enforcement officer, but somebody that they're familiar with. As a result of that, the Clery Act, um, highlights and identifies campus security authorities, or CSAs. Um, those are defined within policy, but what that looks like for our college, uh, at the tech college, that would be, uh, anybody within our district police, our campus security, our district security, parking attendants, OTC leadership, uh, administration, deans or resource teachers, just to mention a few. Uh, the law requires various crimes to be reported. These crimes are broken up in four different categories. Criminal offenses, Violence Against Women Act, or also known as VAWA, that covers dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking, as well as hate crimes that show bias. In addition to arrest and referrals for disciplinary action, which include arrests for liquor law violations, drug law violations, as well as illegal weapon possession. All these crimes are followed by the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting, also known as UCR. So regardless of where you are in the country, if a crime happens, that is the standard that is used. It's also important to mention that crime statistics are based on reports of alleged criminal offenses, regardless of the person's affiliation with our institution. Crimes are recorded based on the location in which they've occurred. We utilize the Department of Education Regulatory Guidance, which outlines what's called Clery Geography. Clery Geography is broken up in three categories, uh, which is known as on-campus, non-campus, and public property. And what that looks like, um, our on-campus would end up being an example of our OTC main campus, along with this building of the ELC. That would be considered our on-campus. Our non-campus would end up being an approved overnight stay, that's longer than one night in a repeated use for our, um, for our student group trips, as an example. And then our public property would end up, um, being, uh, an immediate perimeter around each campus. That's generally the case. Um, and then lastly, our Drug-Free School and Community Act, also known as our DFSCA, and the Clery Act are intertwined together, they're often spoke about one another. Um, that is our Drug and Alcohol Abuse Prevention Program, also known as our DAP. That is a written resource, uh, that our students can utilize. It provides various elements that the Department of Education requires. It also includes a biennial review, which is an internal assessment of, um, our prevention program to make sure that we meet the needs of our campus community. The information in section two are the core elements of the Clery Act. To highlight information in this section, there's various forms of notification that the campus community, uh, is captured. To ensure the health and safety of our students and employees during an emergency, we have what's called emergency notifications. These emergency notifications, um, we currently utilize our standard response protocols, also known as our SRPs. Um, that is our secure, our lockdown, our evacuate, our shelter, and this can cover anything from a gas leak, police activity, even pandemic alerts. Additionally, we have timely warnings. These are issued for Clery Act crimes that pose a threat, providing information of ways to avoid risk. We also provide information, uh, in our daily crime log. This is reports of all criminal offenses, not limited to Clery Act crimes. It utilizes plain language, uh, generic location, and is meant to provide crime information more promptly than a annual statistic report within our ASR. Moving forward, the campus community is informed about available training, not only about our drugs and alcohol, uh, prevention, but also interpersonal violence, which includes dating violence, domestic violence, and stalking. These resources are available and accessible to not only our students, but, but also our staff. Um, one such resource, uh, that we provide is, um, is called Written Notification Guide. This offers information about rights, options, prevention, as well as response and accommodation for, uh, prevention measures and services that are available. And all of that information is, um, is captured within the Annual Security Report, um, which is provided to our campus community on or before October 1st. And that notice of availability is provided on various sites, which include our OCPS homepage, uh, the Orange Technical College Campus Safety webpage, and HR page. And then finally, um, we provide information to, um, the campus community of ways to report crime or emergencies. And in conclusion, this policy is a further commitment to our campus community to create a safe and supportive environment for staff and students, one that focuses on promoting awareness, education, and transparency surrounding campus safety. And lastly, um, there is a significant penalty for not adhering to the Clery Act. Um, at, at, excuse me, at it, at the inception in, uh, 1990, uh, fees for non-compliance was at $25,000 per incident. Fast forward, January 1st of 2024, it is now $69,733 per incident. And thank you. That concludes my session.
Thank, thank you. Let me recognize Vice Chair Gallo.
Thank you. Thank you for that great presentation. Um, clearly is a federal mandate? Okay. So my, my question, because there's some things on being a drug-free school and there was some mentioned of arrest for, for drug use. What if a student has their medical marijuana? What impact does that have, if any, on this act?
Great question. So with the Drug-Free School and Community Act and the Clery Act, it has to be a federal law that's broken, not an institutional infraction. So we would end up following the rules of federal law.
Does that mean that a student that has their medical marijuana license that is taking or caught with a prescription on them would be arrested? Or what, what would be the ramifications of that? Because state law dictates that they're allowed.
Right. If it's on campus, um, that would be a federal, that would be against the law, so that would be accounted for, but it would be on a case-by-case basis and it would end up being reviewed by our help desk that we have access to. We haven't run into that yet.
So how do we, um, what is our plans to communicate that to students? Because there's a lot of students out there that have their medical marijuana. And it's, and it's getting ready, it could potentially be recreational after the November Dr. Armbruster?
Struggle with this?
Yes. We all do.
Okay. Um, I'm going to ask.
See if you can find somebody with the authority to.
Yeah. I'm going to ask, uh, Counsel.
Thank you.
To, to respond to that.
Thank you.
If, if she's able.
Ms. Entvall?
Sorry, getting over bronchitis. Uh, we still have, our, our campuses are drug-free. And so if students are found with drugs, they'll be handled in accordance with the code of student conduct, or in the case of the OTC, their code of student conduct. And so they still are not allowed to use or possess them while they're on campus. So we'll just handle those as they'd be normally a drug infraction.
Follow-up, Madam?
Yes.
Um, so currently we do have, um, policy in place that allows students to have their parents come to a school to administer it, um, as long as they bring it and then take it back home. So would we be allowing the same provision at our Orange Technical Schools if it was medically necessary?
They, they are adults and so, so I think the answer is no, because it is, uh, it's something that that's not permitted on our campuses and so they would have to take their medication off-campus. We, we, we offer the ability for our minor children to have their parents come as a convenience to the parents. Some school districts don't allow it on there at all. We make sure that none of our, because we are part of the, we are part of the Drug-Free Workplace Act, we make sure that none of our employees handle that medication. But if they were adults on the adult campus, they would have to comply with no drugs on campus and they would have to, whatever they're taking would have to be off-campus's.
So a, a student adult, because this is a college, so a student could get in, could be removed from Orange Technical College, but they couldn't be arrested if they have their medical license because it's state law that they're allowed. Just because we say we're a drug-free, you can't have it on campus, that doesn't mean that we can arrest them, correct? They're, they would just, the consequence would be a school-related consequence, not a law enforcement consequence.
I, I believe the answer is yes, unless there's, unless they have possession of a number of, it's kind of, we're talking in hypotheticals. That's a little difficult.
Ms. Entvall, though, um, I, I heard an either-or, an or question and a, and an answer of yes. So for the benefit of all of us, which part was yes, they can or they can't be arrested? Wasn't clear to me.
I, I think it would depend on how much they have and what they're doing with it. Um, but we don't have, you cannot have them on campus. So we're not going to, first of all, I think we have to determine whether or not, we have to figure out whether or not, how do we know that they have drugs on campus? It's a drug-free campus. If we find that they have drugs on them, then their infractions handled within accordance with the student code of conduct.
But they would have a, they would have a prescription, so the amount that they would have on them would be per the prescription that's allowable under law. So, uh, because this, this is where it gets murky, right? Because it's federal versus state. Federal, when it comes to arresting, federal shouldn't trump state law when you're in the state of Florida that's allowed. So I guess my question is, would they be arrested and what would be the consequences to, um, a student? Because maybe, maybe they took it before they, they came to campus, but it's noticeable or you can smell it on them if they, if they choose to smoke it. Um, and then they're searched, because we're allowed to search them, and you find medical marijuana on them. What would be the consequence? What would we have to do and can they be arrested? Because I, I would, I'm assuming that the answer to being arrested should be no.
I don't know. Mr. Palmerini is shaking his head over there. I'm not sure if he wanted to provide more input as well.
Yeah, so.
Do you want to jump in, Mr. Palmerini?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. So federal and state law differ on marijuana currently. Currently marijuana under federal law is a Schedule I drug, which means it has no medicinal value whatsoever. value whatsoever. Now, the administration has currently moved to reschedule it to a Schedule III drug, but it's still going through the process. To answer your question, could the feds, if they were to show up on campus and saw that, could the feds arrest them? Yes. Will the state officials arrest them? No. And so that's the difference. It would be an administ, it would be a consequence disciplinary-wise under our code of conduct, but we wouldn't be arresting them for possession of marijuana on the campus if they had a marijuana, a medical marijuana card, because it's not a violation of state law. However, it is still a violation of federal law. Now, the federal prosecutors have, and the federal law enforcement, they have made enforcement decisions that they are not going to look for that and generally prosecute that. But it is technically still a crime, and it's still on the books as a Schedule I drug that could potentially subject somebody to arrest for federal charges.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Palmieri.
Thank you. Member Gould.
Okay, I'm gonna keep following this line of questioning. We follow the drug-free zone, which is why the feds would have any authority within our district, right? Because we're not federal sites, we are state sites. Can we carve out prescriptions for medical marijuana out of that policy? That's the first question. Can we carve that out? If it's a prescription for medical marijuana, in the description of that drug-free, do we have the authority to carve it out?
Who wants to answer this? Mr. Palmieri?
So, so, under the constitutional amendment and the statute that was adopted pursuant to the constitutional amendment here in Florida, medical marijuana is allowed, but it exempts certain places, including in that is schools.
Colleges or K-12?
I think it said schools, but if you would give me a second to look it up, just to make sure. On the grounds of a preschool, primary school, or secondary school. So secondary school generally under state statute is what you would consider your middle and high schools. So I think just looking at this statute, 381-986, I think it does not specifically exempt it on college campuses. But I want to make sure I look at that before I definitively say one way or the other.
So with that in mind, I would suggest we find out if we have the authority to be able to carve out the things that are legal in this state to get prescriptions for. And I think marijuana is probably the only thing that wouldn't fall under our general rules, but I don't know if there's other things that may fall under those. How do we treat opioids? Do they have to not bring those on? Because, by the way, they're also on, on the, on the list. But when you have a prescription for it, you have a right to have it. So I would say we should hold off on revising this until we know where our authority really begins and ends with, I'm not talking K-12, I'm talking our technical colleges, which have adults in them.
We also have secondary students on our, on our-
I understand that, but, you know, if, if we're allowing them to dual-enroll at Valencia, and I'd also like to know what Valencia's policy is on this. They, they have to have that same agency to follow the law, period, the end. You know, if, if we're gonna treat them like the young adults they are, we, there's accountability for that. And, you know, no matter how we personally feel about marijuana one way or another, I think we, now that more and more states are recognizing medical marijuana, and people are truly helped, especially with chronic pain in this, we need to figure out a rule that doesn't make them felons or misdemeanors. So I just would not want to do that to anybody who has a prescription and is taking it as prescribed.
Member Kestrel Denel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This makes me wonder if we have a, do we have a different code of conduct for our technical camp, colleges? I don't think we do.
I defer to-
We do not have a different one now. We are working on that now. There is going to be a division of the two. We've actually begun the process and are, because there's a lot in one that doesn't apply to the other. So, so we are doing that at this point in time.
All right, thank you. Because I think when we're dealing with adults, that's a different level of expectations and behaviors and, and consequences. So I appreciate that. And if we do, I like Member Gould's suggestion of looking at what Valencia College does. That's a great, same-level students, age range, and I think that would be great. So thank you for mentioning that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Kestrel Denel. Yeah, I think finding out what Valencia does at the same time we would find out what UCF does, because they are just, yeah, all of them. It'd be helpful to see if there's consistency. The one question I have, and I think it's for Mr. Palmieri, and I think when I'm, when I'm hearing board members talk about carving out, I think what you're referring to is that we would specifically in our code carve medical marijuana out in terms of being a-
With a prescription.
Yes, okay. And the one question I have for Mr. Palmieri, does the issue of taking federal funds play into this? Or am I confusing this with other areas where if we take federal funds, we find ourselves under federal law?
So, Madam Chair, I mean, obviously, the provision of federal funds is always conditioned upon following federal law. And to the extent that you do not do that, one of the penalties could be withholding of funds by the federal government. So I want to, in researching this, I want to make sure that, you know, we are complying, if we have to comply with federal law, and if there's a penalty within the statute for not following it, I mean, we obviously have penalties in this statute of $69,000 if we violate the CLERI and BAWA. So I think that's all something that we need to look at very closely to ensure that the carve-out isn't going to jeopardize our federal fundings. But yes, general, the general rule is you take federal funds, you follow federal law, and if you don't, you're subject to penalties.
All right, thank you, Mr. Palmieri. I asked that question not, as you had said before, this isn't about my opinion, I just want to be, I want to understand as clearly as possible potential ramifications. And I think the idea of looking at universities and colleges and seeing what they're doing, I think would give us a lot of comfort if they're doing this, that if the federal government was going to step in, they would be stepping in on a whole lot of us, as opposed to us just kind of jumping out there and testing the water. So anyway, I think that was a really good idea. And they may also be able to tell us what, what their peers across the state are doing. And John, last question. Are there, I thought at one point there was some challenges going on over the federal government's authority in this read, in this area? But I think that's all settled, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any challenges to federal authority at this point that are ongoing and active. This is an area in which they can regulate.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we, we believe that the direction of the federal government is they would stand down and look the other way. But that could potentially change if we had different leadership in Washington, which would mean we'd just get back here fast and revisit our policies if we need to. All right, Member Ferrant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question with, where again can the public find the data from this information for the, what you compile?
Sure. So, Orange Technical College, for our institution, we have it on several different locations. We have it on the OCPS homepage, on the footer area, right next to our EEO statement. That connects to our HR, our human resource page. That information's also there. In addition to, I developed the Orange Technical College Campus Safety webpage, where that information is there as well. Annually, every October 1, our campus community receives a notification. That information is available with the direct link.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I really appreciate all your help. I know this is, it's a lot to, I'm sure, compile everything and get the information. And from our conversation previously, this information is not just things that maybe happen on campus, but things that happen within a vicinity of the campus, correct?
Correct.
Is there, how can we see what that vicinity is, or the markings? So just, is it within like a 10-block radius or things like that? Or how, how does that work?
No. So every, every year, I compile statistics based on our CLERI geography. We have maps for our, for our CSAs that we utilize to capture our on-campus. The non-campus properties can vary, but it's dependent on the locations in which the students end up visiting.
Is, how would we, how could we see that ourselves? Just so we kind of get an idea of what all this covers?
Sure, I can provide it.
Oh, that'd be awesome. Thank you, thank you. Just to touch on the, the medical marijuana, I'm curious, I really know nothing about this. I don't really know how it got brought up. But how often is somebody really taking medical marijuana? Can they take it when they're not on campus? Can they, I mean, if you're doing prescription pills, it's usually maybe at most, you're taking them four times a day. So you take a class, and, I don't know, I just, those are just thoughts I have, that, I mean, maybe there's ways around that where you can take that when you're at home, or right before you go to class, and you're not on campus, even if it's prescribed. So just like our students can't take antibiotics, for instance, on their own at, at school, maybe it's something then where they would have to turn those into a nurse's station or something? I have no idea. But just seems a little like, I don't know, if it's drug-free, I think it should be drug-free, even if it's prescribed. But just my two cents.
All right, thank you. Dr. Armbruster?
Just, just real quick, I want to make sure I'm clear on this. The policy itself has no mention or anything regarding the medical marijuana. So the policy itself, we're good with. The question is how we're going to carve out and handle that within the code of conduct that we're developing for the Orange Technical College. That's correct? All right. Thank you all very much. If I can figure this microphone out, I'll be rocking and rolling.
Yeah. But thank you for circling us back around, because I, having walked in late, I did read it, I got briefed on it, but I was having a hard time tying it in as well. So I'm glad it's not tied in, so we don't need to take it out. Member Gould, we're back to you.
My suggestion would be also to be Colorado. Oh, thanks. My suggestion was also going to be to take a look at what the applications are in Colorado, because they're a few years ahead of us in how they've been working through this. When this law was originally passed, that's where we went to for our policies and procedures. So they have lots and lots of teachings on, on this.
All right. Member Salamanca?
I just wanted to say thank you, because I did ask for the report earlier today when we were chatting, so I did get a chance to see it. And I, I just, I know we're talking about all these exceptions and carve-outs and stuff, and it's really important, and also for the code of conduct for OTC campuses to also be applicable to the type of student that's there. But these numbers are fairly low. I mean, they're all in the single digits. I think it goes all the way back to 2020. They're all ones across the board. So I think for me, it was great to see that. There just really isn't any of these terrible things happening in our OTC campuses, or at least reported to us that are happening. And so I think the worst one was a three, and it was more on vehicle theft. And I know that, that, you know, we have to count public property, non-campus property, and then on-campus property for this report. So I think, you know, we're doing a great job as OCPS and as well as OTC campuses, and our security and law enforcement, and keeping our campuses safe. So I just want to say, looking back all the way to 2020, these are good numbers to look at. Obviously, we want all of these to be zeros, but definitely don't want them to be high. One of my questions was just on the ranges here. Like, when, when do these reports call the attention of a larger issue in terms of reporting? Is there like a max? Is, like, how do we get judged on this report?
How do you mean? How do you mean?
So like, when we send these numbers on number of arrests, number of weapons, you know, robbery, burglary, all of this stuff, and we report this, right? You mentioned you report it to the FBI, is that correct?
No, no, no. We report this information to the Department of Education. We utilize the FBI Uniform Crime Reporting-
Got it.
-which is a standardization of crimes.
And I was just curious, as a district, what are the numbers that if they went past the next number, we know we're in trouble? Or do we have any benchmarks?
No, no, no. CLERI doesn't, CLERI doesn't do that. A lot of the infractions that CLERI ends up having for the ramifications is mainly due to annual security reports not providing that, misrepresenting crime statistics, the lack of administrative capability, various different elements, but not if you report a number of crimes. We have a, or I have the ability to have tech support, if you will, for CLERI Act, and they provide us guidance on any type of questions that we have in regards to particular crimes. So in the event we had a particular crime happen, and that it's outside of our normal numbers, we would communicate to them, and then they would provide us guidance. But there would be no type of discipline or anything like that.
Got it, okay. Thank you. I was just curious if there was any feedback. Thank you.
All right, that closes out our questions and comments. Thank you all so much for bringing this information to us. And if there's no further comments from boards, we'll, board members will move on to 4.03. Thank you all again.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello.
Testing is on. All right, okay. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members, Counsel, and other OCPS staff. I'm Stacy, and I'm here to present our revised policy JCA assignment of students to school. The purpose is to, sorry, the proposed revision to policy JCA includes the incorporation of a new transfer, the proximity transfer. Additional proposed revisions to the existing policy language includes edits to content, formatting, and terminology consistent with statutory language. Okay. the name from procedure to applications. And in applications is the process in which guardians are registering or submitting applications. So the change includes reordering of bullet points and the renaming of number three from procedure to applicants, and we included parenting plan, affidavit, and birth certificate. These all ensure that we are processing transfers to the parents that our school designated. You got it. Section C, established deadline date was stricken- Section C, established deadline date was stricken, as we will process transfers and send responses to families, at best 30 days after we received in our office. Number five, subsection I, transfers are to be revoked by student enrollment only. We added the "only." Subsection two, it was added that if a student is withdrawn by a parent, or removed from the school in which they received the transfer, to attend an alternative site, or just withdrawn for any other purposes, the transfer will become null and void, and the parent will have to reapply if there is availability. Number six, removes John McKay, as this scholarship no longer applies to FES UA, and the word "scholarship" is stricken, as it is repetitive, because you have family empowerment scholarship, and then we mentioned scholarship again. Scholarship, once again, has been removed. Section A has been removed from policy, and B is the new A for 504 Accommodation Plan. I'm sorry. And 504 Accommodation Plan has been removed. 504 students are not eligible for the FES UA scholarship, or the public option. The eligibility criteria for the public option is only with a current IEP. So a student must have a current IEP, and we included this in the language. Section C, where ESC has been written out, so we, you know, we expanded it, so it's not just abbreviated ESC, it's Exceptional Student Education, includes section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, and program placement has been removed. This transfer is processed through ESC, Section 504 Department, and additional language has been included for clarification. Section D is the ESC, Section 504 Sibling Transfer, newly written for clarification. So we incorporated this new section. Section E is academic transfer, has been written, is academic transfer, and it has been written to clarify the purpose, and we removed ROTC, as all high schools offer Controlled Open Enrollment, section B clarifies a change in the list of eligible schools, and how it is updated after school starts. Currently, we list all the schools, and their available seats, once school starts. We list them by grade level, available seats for elementary schools. Section H did, was stricken, interscholastic, however, this section should remain the same, because it should be interscholastic and intra-scholastic. So it remains. Rising fifth grades, section has been created, so that parents are not applying, I'm sorry, pending, so parents are not applying during the summer months. And section D has been removed from all the areas, because it can be found in revocation, which is in the beginning of transfers for student enrollment. Once again, under, sorry, page 41, section D is being removed, once again, as this statement is found in revocation, because it's duplication. If we go to page 43, ESC sibling was stricken from the policy, or this section deleted, because we moved the information to our earlier one, under ESC 504 Transfer. Here, also, section M, with pending move, we deleted date application submitted to the students first, and changed it to the students' first day of school, allowing parents the complete 90 days to move. And section A addresses families that move during the summer, they do not need to apply for a pending move. Under grandfather transfer, on page 44, we took out the words "takes place after April 30th," because, once we complete a rezoning, we give them 15 days after the rezoning, to apply for a grandfather transfer. Section O, on the Hope Scholarship, section D, we had students must remain, however, we deleted that, and it's no longer an option for the transfer. Which brings us to page 46, and our proximity transfer. Okay. So we introduced the proximity transfer earlier, and it's processed through our office, year round, and because it's new, I'll just go through it. A proximity transfer allows a student who lives within a proximity of a school that has capacity as determined by student enrollment, to apply to transfer. The following shall apply to proximity transfers. For high school and middle school students, the transfer distance to the high school or middle school is two miles or less from the residence, as determined by student enrollment GIS software. For elementary schools, the transfer distance to the elementary school is one mile or less from the residence, as determined by student enrollment GIS software. The list of available receiving schools will be revised and published by the Office of Student Enrollment. The receiving school must have available capacity, as determined by student enrollment. If there is a change of address, this transfer shall be null and void, and the student shall be withdrawn at the end of the current school year. Siblings who reside in the same household may be eligible to transfer with the student who has granted the transfer, so long as the stu, the school has available seats for the sibling. Transportation is not provided. And finally, as approved, an approved proximity transfer may be revoked if the transfer is not immediately utilized by the, and the receiving school no longer has available seats. And this concludes my presentation of JCA.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Neal. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Slide 39. When, we're talking about rising fifth graders. It says, "Section has been created so that parents are not applying for the transfer during summer months." Can you clarify what was the process before, and what will the process be now?
So, if I move during the summer, able to remain at the school, and usually, they only need to apply at the beginning of the school year, or at the end of the school year. During the summer, they do not. And I think that may have been a little bit of a typo, because I think it should have, because that's the process for pending move, so I did notice it also. So I was going to bring it back, and maybe strike it.
Okay. So...
Because it is, it is confusing.
Yeah. So, if you have a rising fifth grader, or a rising eighth grader, or a rising senior, you can't apply during the summer? Or you can't apply during the summer?
You can't apply during the summer.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Question about, I'm looking for this on board docs, because the, it's kind of hard to read on the screen, and it's like, for my eyes, at my age, like, impossible. I'm not finding this on board docs. Was this posted on board docs?
I got it.
You got it? Okay. Maybe it's because I'm on, yeah, I, okay. It's all in that one PowerPoint. Thank you. The question I have is probably, it's for the next item. Member Ferrant.
I just wanted to say, thank you for adding that proximity transfer. I think that was incredible. Thank you for listening to us, the community. We've had so many similar to this, you know, issues where they're coming, and they literally live a block away. And so I think having something like this in place really does help the community, helps them to see that, you know, there is that opportunity to snag a seat if it, if it's available. And so, just to clarify, there has to be availability in the school, so.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. So that's the clincher, because some of ours are at capacity or whatnot, but I really do appreciate it. I think you guys always go above and beyond, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Member Ferrant. Let me come back to this. Maybe it's because I'm on my iPad, but I have a PowerPoint presentation, but it's only on I-H-A-R.
Gosh. Okay. It's, it's not the iPad.
I'd like to stay with that, and hope there's nobody in the audience that's got an iPad, but, nope, not the iPad. All right. We ready to go on?
Good.
Okay.
No further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
Yes, ma'am. Good, good afternoon, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Deputy Superintendent. This afternoon, I bring before you policy JFBD, Magnet Programs, Magnet Schools, for Proposed revisions to JFBD include the revision to permit parents or guardians living outside of Orange County to submit an application for magnet programs, while awaiting their move to Orange County to be complete. It includes the expansion of existing elementary sibling preference to include middle school siblings, providing the sibling is currently in the magnet and returning for the coming school year for which the applicant is applying. Changes also include the preference for multiple births, so that multiple birth siblings are tied together in the lottery. And we include revisions to bring the policy up to date with current terminology, formatting, and statutory language. I'll skip to the first change, which is noted on slide 51, pending move. We return, we turn to section five, Application Selection and Admission Process. Subsection C states that the student and parent legal guardian of a student must reside in Orange County, Florida, at the time of application, with the exception of the following. We add section two, subsection two, which states, "The parent or guardian who does not reside in Orange County at the time of application must receive an approved pending move transfer from the Office of Student Enrollment, or establish Orange County residency prior to the registration deadline provided by the Office of School Choice Services upon receiving a magnet seat offer. Failure to, to receive an approve, an approved pending move transfer, or to establish residency prior to the registration deadline provided by the Office of School Choice will nullify the magnet seat offer." I go to section 6B, the other change. Assignment Preferences currently provides for elementary sibling preference. The sibling preference is now expanded to include elementary and middle school siblings. The applicant may have, an applicant may have sibling preference, if applying for the same magnet as the sibling, providing the sibling is in the magnet and returning to the magnet in the coming school year. Siblings are defined as brothers and sisters, stepbrothers, stepsisters, or half-brothers, half-sisters, living at the same residence. And the next big change is, in addition to section 6C, Assignment Preference provides for parent multiple birth siblings. If applying for the same magnet, and the same magnet strand, I, for example, French or Spanish, and one multiple birth sibling is chosen in the lottery, the other multiple birth sibling may also be offered a seat. Documentation of multiple births must be provided and uploaded at the time of electronic application for each sibling. And priority consideration to students who have participated in and completed a program in, in a similar preparatory magnet theme has been deleted, as this is outlined in section nine, students entering OCPS from another county, state, or country of the And then the few minor changes are on page 54, slide 54, page eight of the policy. We change Associate Superintendent to Executive Leader. That is done three times in this policy, also on page nine, or slide 55 of the policy. And that is the end of my presentation, Madam Chair. We welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Let's begin with Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank you for this revision, because we've been asking for it, you know, when we talk about siblings, making it make sense, and then talking about the deadlines. I think we're in an environment where we need to be competitive, and we need to, we need to do what we can to have students go to our school. Like, we want them to choose us, because we're easy to deal with, and, and we don't have all these rules in place that make it difficult for them to go to one of our schools. I just think the dynamic has changed, and with that dynamic and the environment, we as a school district must keep up and change as well. And customer service and competition is definitely amongst the top two things that we need to do. So I appreciate this very much. When it, it comes to magnet schools, to applying for them, when is the registration deadline?
So the magnet application opens November 1, and it closes February 15, February 15.
So when, say, somebody applied from another county, when would they be required to reside in Orange County before they lose their seat?
So, great question. So if I live outside of Orange County, let's say, I live in the neighboring county, and I'm, know I'm moving, and I'm interested in a magnet program, I can apply in November, and still live, let's say, Seminole County. I can apply, based on this change, I can apply for the magnet. And then, the magnet, the first lottery takes place in March, about mid-March. So if I am chosen, if my child is chosen for a magnet seat, let's say, at Hillcrest, for example, I, I have, our office will say, will send a letter and say, "Congratulations, you have been selected for a seat offer." You have, usually, we give about a couple weeks after the lottery, after that letter, we give a couple weeks to all chosen for a seat offer, to go to the school and register, or what I say, "Claim your seat," to let the school know you're coming, provide any registration information. So we would, in language, give them that deadline, so that, the deadline, the same deadline that everybody else has, we would give them that deadline to do one of two things. Either be a resident in Orange County by that time, or get an approved pending move transfer from the Office of Student Enrollment, and that would buy them more time if they haven't completed the move yet. So, after the first lottery, if they're chosen, they would have a few weeks to make that happen. We would provide that deadline, not only to them, but to all chosen for a seat offer. If they're not chosen for the first lottery, we have a second lottery in April. If they are, if an outer-county resident is chosen in that lottery, again, we would give them a few weeks to... give them a few weeks to get, um, paperwork, either to reside in Orange County, or to get a pending move transfer with the Office of Student Enrollment.
So what is the process for the pending move?
Great question.
Form in, in, in your department?
Yes.
And how long would that, how much more time would that give them? And the reason I'm asking is that those who move are moving usually over the summer, if they're building a house, the house might not be done till the first day of school. So I'm just trying to understand, does that pending move form give them the opportunity that says, "Hey, you have to be an Orange County resident by the time school starts"? Like, what is the deadline in the pending form submission?
So according to the pending move that I just brought to you today, we allow, uh, 90 days after the first day, the start of that student's first day into school.
So if they were granted the pending move, they would have 90 days after the start of school to be an Orange County resident?
Under the pending move transfer.
And what are the guideline, um, what are the guidelines for the pending move transfer?
Um, that the parent provides proof of their future move. So for example, um, we need a closing date, um, for if they're building a home, or buying a home, or a welcome move-in letter for an apartment or a lease agreement.
Okay. That doesn't sound very difficult. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, Member Casterdental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you, Mr. Moody, for imagining all the scenarios, but, um, and I have to let you-
There's always one. There's always one that sneaks up on me.
Yeah. Well, I might have one.
Yeah.
But I have to let you know that when you, I was looking for the phrase you used in the policy, but I don't see it. But when you talk about multiple birth siblings being tied together, I have a visual. I don't think that that's what you mean. Um, I think you mean tied in the lottery, but anyway.
You haven't had multiple birth siblings, tying them together sometimes sounds like a good idea.
Oh, my God.
Just to keep track of it.
So there are also times when you have siblings who are not born on the same day, or, um, they might be nine months apart, same school year. Would they, would they qualify under that multiple birth, um, I mean, it's the same scenario as far as parents are concerned and convenience, and having your students, your children together. How does that work?
So you are correct, Member Casterdental. You're throwing me for a loop. Good question. So we, under the intent of the way this policy is written today, that I proposed to you, that would, that scenario would not be included.
Okay, thank you. And here's one more. What if they are step siblings in the same household, same school year?
So...
The same grade, same thing. I mean, I guess it would fall under that same scenario I just mentioned, that they're siblings of the same grade, same family. Yeah.
Brady Bunch, yeah.
So, just, I can see people-
Yeah.
I can, I know people come up with all sorts of questions, and they will pose that to you, so.
They, they will, and that's why we rely on policy to be very, in, in regarding the magnet, we rely on policy to be very succinct, so that we can turn to policy and say, uh, so that we're consistent, right? So that would be at the pleasure of this board, as to how broad you would want to paint that, that brush-
Okay.
-with this policy and, and allow in different scenarios. Yes, ma'am?
Um, well, first, I would, I want to thank you for being flexible and making this flexibility for our parents. It's hard for a large organization to come up with so many scenarios that fit and allow that, um, to be so accommodating to parents, and it also is really about what's best for the kids. So I can imagine if one kid, uh, one student gets the lottery, um, that their, uh, their sibling who's also in third grade would also receive that same kind of seat. So I would be in favor of amending it, if that's what we need to do, or, or amending it the next time it comes up. I don't know what the next, if that's substantive enough to make that change.
I would defer to General Counsel on, on that, but, uh, rule development is next.
We have not yet advertised this policy. That's the purpose of today's work session, so we can discuss those things with you. So that's a great suggestion, and I'll let Mr. Moody draft that red line.
All right. Thank you, Member Casterdental. Um, I had pushed my button before we, before we took any questions and thought I would just wait until appropriate time to weigh in, and this is it, so thank you for that. I think we can probably easily remedy that with our multiple birth language to include, um, multiple students from the same household, um, in the same grade level. Uh, I think that will take care of it. I do have a question about the language that we have at the, it's, um, I think it's the last sentence in the red line new language, "To be eligible for this preference," the preference being the multiple sibling or, or multiple birth, yes. "To be eligible for this privilege, the sibling must meet any academic or related criteria for this next level." So the language that you have above, it would be if the siblings were applying for the same magnet and the same magnet strand. And so when you're talking about preference, I think there you're talking about that they would have to be, have the minimum, whether it's academic requirements, in order to be in that magnet program. This was brought up by one of our former employees who wanted to move their twins. One made it into a magnet school, the other didn't. I can easily envision a situation, and I most, I think you all know, well, everybody up here knows I have twins, and no, I never really tied them together, but I will tell you, my daughter was always, like, dashing out there, where I had to give serious thought to how to keep her safe, but, um, but going back to the point here, if you wanted your, both siblings to go to the same school, but one wasn't interested or eligible for that magnet, it, it seems to me this language doesn't incorporate that. Am I right? And in, in the particular case I'm talking about, we had a Hispanic family, and, um, they wanted their children in the, um, Spanish-language magnet. One of them made it in the Spanish language, the other made it in the French-language magnet. But imagining that you want your kids in the same school, but one is really into, uh, performing arts and the other is not, so I would like to see us broaden this language to consider that possibility as well.
If I can, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, so, two things. So that language you referenced, "To be eligible for this preference, the sibling must meet any academic or related criteria for the next level, and must submit an application per application requirements," that's fancy language. That, that really is intended, and it captures, uh, like the requirements for Orlando gifted. Orlando gifted, you have to be gifted in order to, you have to meet that requirement to be eligible to attend. So a sibling who is not gifted would not get a, a sibling transfer to, um, or a multiple birth transfer to Orlando gifted. So that's what that language, maybe it's poorly written, maybe we can revise that. To, to your second point, uh, I would say, where we talk about the same-
Strand.
Strand, right? So we had good conversation at Cabinet, at, uh, regarding this, and, and I've talked to many others, uh, sitting here today. And that is, uh, I think, good conversation that, that we need to have today to clarify that language, if, if you want to remove it or clarify it. So I'll give you an example. Hillcrest, for example, has two strands. They have a Spanish strand and a French-language strand. As the policy is written today, uh, the parent would have to apply both students for one of those strands. Both would have to apply for Spanish, both would have to apply for, uh, French, as it's written today. Now, we've had conversations, uh, at Cabinet, and the question is, should we really make that a mandate in language, in policy language, or give parents that flexibility to say, "Yeah, one is interested in Spanish, and the one, the other one really is not interested in Spanish, and would like, uh, French." So, uh, that is the pleasure of this board today, is to have that conversation and give me direction on that particular language.
Thank you very much.
Great question.
Yeah, thank you, and I, um, thank you for clarifying what was meant by eligible for this preference. Um, I know what, what my opinion on this is, and that is that they wouldn't have to be in the same, um, strand. And for that matter, because the reality of why a parent might want their, their children in the same school, but not necessarily even have one of them in a magnet, you might, you might be primarily moving the twins, because one of them is really interested in this magnet program, but the other one may not be, maybe there's only one magnet program, and they're not interested in some other strand, but the parent wants to keep them in the same school. And you can name off, uh, several reasons, but I'm sure a lot come to you, transportation, having the same set network of friends at school, all of those things. So I don't want our language to limit that possibility, that a parent may opt to put one in the lottery for the magnet program, but then want the second, uh, twin to follow that twin to that school, but not in the magnet. Mr. Moody?
Yes, ma'am. All right. So you, you also, uh, thrown a good question, a tough question out there, something I didn't anticipate. All right, so the scenario is, we have magnet schools, and we have magnet programs. So magnet schools are OGA. Uh, for the benefit of the public, magnet schools are OGA in Hillcrest, for example, and Howard. Those are complete magnets. Now, the only transfers, other than magnet transfers, that we allow into magnet schools, OGA, Howard, and Hillcrest, are staff on-site transfers. So if I work at Orlando gifted, uh, and my, and my child is gifted and qualifies for gifted, then I can, um, and I wasn't in the lottery, I can bring my child with me. Same thing with Howard. Um, if I work at Howard, uh, my kid is interested in performing arts, I can bring my child as a, on a workplace transfer to Howard. Same thing with Hillcrest. So if I have multiple births, however, uh, one is, and I'm not an employee, um, but I want one child, I want one child to go to Hillcrest, uh, one of our magnet schools. Um, the, uh, the other one, because we don't transfer into magnet schools, um, we don't have that available, availability in, in policy yet, I would say. The other, the sibling could not come. You'd have to go through the lottery process to, to do that. Now, so that's magnet schools. If you, we have magnet programs, let's say I'm interested in dual language at Hunters Creek Elementary. If I wanted, if I have multiple births, and I have one child that is interested in, uh, the dual language, you know, at Hunters Creek or Tildenville, um, the magnet, the way it works now is that the, the parent would have to apply both.
Can I stop you for a minute?
Yes, ma'am. Am I running down the wrong path?
No, not necessarily. I just got lost. I, I'm already lost on the last part, so I just figured I'd get more lost. So, um, so I'm seeing here that if one multiple birth sibling is chosen in the lottery, the other multiple birth sibling may be offered a seat. That's for a magnet school or magnet school program?
That is for either way.
Okay.
Either one, but, uh, I may have misunderstood your question. Uh, the, both students have, the parent has to apply for both students to attend in the lottery.
Both students to attend the school or the magnet?
Uh, the magnet.
Okay.
If-
Okay. Why? So if-
If it-
If it's not a magnet school, it's a magnet school program, and I want one child in the program, and just one child in that school, but not in that program, this would exclude that?
We would handle that scenario, let's say Hunters Creek Elementary, dual language, one's interested in dual language, the other one's not, but I want them at the same school, um, one in the program, one just attending, uh, the school. That, I think, would be best served, uh, with one of our other, uh, transfer options to, to that. We would, um, do that, is, is my thought right now.
So, um, looking at the original language, my understanding of it was, if you had, if you have a, if you have a child and, um, an older sibling is already in that magnet school program, that the younger sibling, when they come up and they would be in the same school, can be in that same school. They didn't have to be in that magnet, it can be in that same school. Is that not how the current policy works?
Hmm, no, ma'am. That is, uh, related to, the sibling preference is, uh, strictly for, uh, magnet programs or magnet schools. So if I'm, if I'm a third grader at Hunters Creek Elementary right now, under the magnet program, and I have a, a kindergarten or brother, right, you know, who wants to come next year, my parent can apply for Hunters Creek, uh, Elementary, um, magnet program. The lottery would recognize that, uh, I, this child has an older sibling already at the school and returning, and so the lottery would pick up that, that sibling and place them, uh, first into the program, give preference to that. But it's all done through the magnet, um, system, magnet, policy, magnet, uh, process.
Okay. So I hear you saying that there, there may be a better way to address it in a different policy, but in terms of accomplishing the goal as a parent, I'm, it's entirely possible that I'm trying to keep my kids in the same school, but they're very different kids. I, I guess, I have twins, and, and people say they're identical, and I say they're opposite. I mean, they couldn't be more, more different. But the value of them being in the same school is, I think, a legitimate issue. So there is a way to do it, but this isn't it.
I would, I would recommend that, that we do it through other avenues of, of, uh-
Okay.
-through student enrollment and other transfer options.
Okay.
Uh, unless they apply for the magnet.
Okay. And then the last, um, comment or question I have on this, and you and I did talk about this, um, is, so I, I know what the answer's gonna be, but I'm not sure I understand why. Um, we, we use the word "may" a lot in, in here, and that we may grant these as opposed to "we shall." And there was a, there's a part of me that, you know, having worked for government for a long time, understand the value of having some control over that. But there's also the potential for the district to use that in an, from an inequitable standpoint. So if I'm a parent, and, um, Member Bird's a parent, and her children got to do this, but I can't do this, and it's why, and it comes back to, "Well, we have 'may,' so we can." So I'm a little, I'm just concerned that we might use that differently from one school to the next, from one child to the next. It's perfectly okay in here, but as a parent, I, I'm not gonna be very comfortable with how that decision is made and why. And this "may" doesn't put any constraints on why there might be different reasons. Mr. Moody?
Uh, so, I guess in my history with, with this policy- So I guess in my history with this policy and others, is, you're right, the word "may" has been used. I'd have to ask my legal friend, phone a friend, as to the reasons why "may" instead of "shall" was used.
Sure you don't want to ask the audience?
Or is used, or could be used, or, in recommendation as far as change in language.
"May" is permissive and "shall" is mandatory.
Yeah, we know that, we know that. The question is, we're using the term "may," and that gives us the discretion whether or not to allow this parent to do something or that parent to do something. And I am troubled by the fact that the district, without any criteria, gets to make different decisions. So what was explained to me was, well, that kind of puts the control in the district's hand to make individual decisions, but I think it should be "shall." So I want somebody to make a compelling argument for why it should be "may." And if not, I want to poll the audience. What is it? I haven't done that "Want to Be a Millionaire," but he just used his line for calling on John.
So we do have "shall" in the policy a couple places, too.
Yeah, we do use "shall" frequently, but it's just here, we're using "may."
Is there, so I guess, in those three, I found four, whatever, is there any instance where school choice services would not give the preference to the siblings of elementary school? Is there any circumstance where it would not happen?
So the one, the one thing that, and by the way, forgive me, I forgot to introduce Dr., you know, I'm terrible about that, but Dr. Kimberly Marlowe and Daniel Webster Gardner
That's that call-in expert.
is behind me as well, who helped with the magnet programs. I think one reason when we're talking about the sibling preference is, let's say that I'm at a magnet school, or I'm applying for a magnet school, and so the scenario is, in January, magnet schools give us numbers. I have 30 seats in kindergarten, I have two seats in fifth grade. Let's say that, or I have zero seats in fifth grade, right? So for this example, let's say that in this scenario, the sibling is going into fifth grade. Well, the school doesn't have any seats in fifth grade available. So that would be one reason why we would not provide a sibling preference if there are no seats available.
Okay, that would, we could easily put that into language. There might be others, but again, I can understand that based on criteria, you might make a different decision. But I do think it's important for it to be based on something that parents can look to and feel confident that this isn't a subjective decision. There's so many reasons that people find to distrust us, everybody, government, I mean, it's not just government, I mean, I just, there's, it's hard to earn trust, it's easy to lose trust, and so to the extent that we can put some language in here that defines why we wouldn't, or, and if it's not in policy, if it's in a management directive or someplace else that we can point to in the event that there's what appears to be discrepancies on how the policy is utilized, that might be a way of addressing it as well. That would give us a little more flexibility as new issues come up that we're not thinking of up right here, to dig down a little bit deeper in terms of specifics. So that's going to be my suggestion right this minute, is that we consider one or the other, and, Member Gould.
Thank you. And, Mr. Moody, you brought up Part A of what I wanted to talk about, which is, whenever we can say yes, especially like to twins, we should. So if one wants to be in one track, or the other wants to be in no track, or a different track, that they should be able to, and we should. I think as we truly adapt, not only to our environment, but what the community wants for choice, and what parents want for choice, whenever we can, we should say yes. And that includes crossing county lines, for me. Whenever we can. And I'm talking about the schools that have the most people in them, so I know how difficult that is. The second thing I wanted to ask about, and I asked you a little bit about this on the phone, and I know you don't have all the answers, but maybe someone here does, is if we have a magnet school that is a full magnet, and the only criteria is application, not any kind of an audition or penchant for that applied magnet, not even an essay on why I want to go to this magnet school, why is that, and why can't we change it?
Let me make sure I understand the question. Are you essentially asking why all magnets don't have a...
So let's take Howard. No, no, well, that would be Part Two, but particularly schools. So the Fame School in New York, you had to audition into that school, even though it was a public school. You had to be the best of the best to get into that school. You had to have some kind of a, and they weren't all the best of the best when they went in there, but they had to put the effort forth to truly apply into that school. So the Howards, I know we already do this for Dr. Phillips or some component of that, but that's the only one that I know of. What is the reasoning, if we're going to have magnet programs, not to have some kind of an application, stick to the schools right now, some kind of an application into that that says why I want to be there? Why, and not just because it's more convenient because it's down the street, or I think it's the best school in the district? Because I feel like sometimes children who have a real innate gift, or a grown gift for a particular area, may not get in because of a lottery system versus really building into their gifts and skills. And we all have gifts and skills, so it's not about one or the other. We all have gifts and skills, we just have to find them and figure out where to plug in, right? And one path is great for this child, and another path is not great for this child, which is, I like the choice, even with siblings, all siblings, not just multi-birth siblings. But I'm wondering if we need to up the game of competition for, particularly magnet schools, but maybe even magnet programs? And that's, is there, is there a reason in the state of Florida not to do that? Or is that a district choice, I guess, is a question? And I guess that's more Amy or John question.
I'm going to ask Greg to answer, and then if he doesn't answer where I think he's going to answer, then I may ask to also answer a little bit of that from a historical perspective of, we did at one time, and we don't now because of a conversation like this with a different side to it.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Armbruster.
All right. So that's his way of saying, let's see if Greg gets it right, and if he flubs it up, I'll chime in. So I think Cherokee School, you mentioned Cherokee School and the development of...
Howard.
Yeah, well, okay, yeah. So Cherokee School, in the concept of that, we are considering a, some type of audition process.
Okay.
And that's a few years to come. So Howard, I think Howard is the performing arts middle school. And although I was not in this department at the time of that inception, I think the idea of providing students, middle school students, a sixth grader who doesn't quite know what musical talent or skill he or she wants to pursue, I think that would be, and also equity, I think. So providing that student that exploration, the middle school period, to explore those talents, and to expand upon any talent or gift that he or she may have. And also, I think equity comes to mind. So if I have students that have resources at home, and have been taking triangle lessons for 18 years, you know, how to play the triangle, since the age of two, that, and then I have a student who comes from a family who may not have those resources at home, and may not have the talent, but does have the, some type of innate ability or desire, I think having an audition may, some would argue, would skew the enrollment one way. Did I get that? Did I get that right? That would be my thought.
Dr. Armbruster, did he get that right?
You know, he did. He did probably a much better job than I could, but the truth of the matter is, and I'm going to use an analogy that I think will make sense to most people. Years ago, we had what we called gatekeepers in our advanced placement programs, and if you walked into an advanced placement program, based on auditions, if you will, everybody looked pretty much alike. And so we decided to open up those gates. I was at one of the first, actually, I was at the first high school, West Orange University, both opened enrollment to kids. We fought with our teachers a little bit, but what our teachers found was that with the right scaffolding, there were a lot more kids who could pass advanced placement programs. That was many, many years ago. The same thing happened with magnet programs, when they were able to audition, they did get, and Greg hit it beautifully with the idea, you did, yes, you got the best talent in the moment, but you also lost potential talent through the audition process. So we went from exclusive to inclusive, and maybe there is a balance in between that would be reachable, but that's why we don't do the heavy push on auditions, because it does turn out to be quite inequitable, and it becomes fairly, obviously, fairly quickly, the haves and the have-nots, and we don't want to deny the ability to the have-nots. And it's not just about the talent. As Greg said, some of it is exploration, especially at the lower grade levels, because kids don't know they have that talent until they're in that environment. So it's not a good or bad answer, but that's the answer historically of how we got to where we are, and why we moved away from that.
So a follow-up. So I think those are excellent reasons for where we are today. I would love to know the data, though, particularly like for Howard. How many of those kids come in cold, completely cold? Like, they don't know they don't have talent? I would venture to guess, there's maybe somebody in the, some in the two-mile radius that go there for that, and I'd also want to know where they're coming from. But I would venture to guess, these kids have a burning desire for the performing arts. I would venture to guess that. I would love to see the data around that.
If I just saw, and we can get that information, I would also venture to share with you that many of those children have parents who have a burning desire for them to be in Howard.
No doubt. I'm guilty.
So as we start to look at the data, and I don't disagree, as we start to look at the data, we have to determine where the burning desire is coming from.
Yeah. No, no, granted.
I just want to make sure we're...
Granted, no, got it, but, got it. And maybe audition is the wrong word, but it seems like if we want, so we are blessed, thank you, for the taxpayers of Orange County, to have very strong arts programs. So this is probably not the best example, it's just the one I live in a lot, right? I understand the arts, I can't talk about rocket science. I can talk about arts. I can talk about performing arts. And it, and, you know, we have, I would argue, I'm not going to be popular after I say this, but so what, I'm gone in November. I would argue that West Orange High School is as good of a theater department as Dr. Phillips' performing arts magnet program, because there is a concentration of a lot of arts around that school, and there always has been, since I've been in the community for 24 years. Right? So it doesn't mean that kids who have those talents, if they don't go to the magnet school, aren't going to have the same opportunities. But if you're going to have a special academy, I mean, Apex, my boys had to apply it to get into Apex at Olympia. It wasn't just based on their grades, because they could take AP classes all day long. They had to write an essay, they had to go to an orientation, they had to commit to wanting to do it. I mean, there was, it wasn't hard, but there was a little bit of effort, which I don't think is a bad thing to be teaching when we're looking at trying to build kids who can go out into the world and go after what they want. Right? So I don't want to make it so hard that we're affecting equity, but I just think there may be a little bit more balance, and again, I come from, say yes wherever you can. Right? So that was my first statement, say yes wherever you can. But in these schools, and even in some of these programs, I don't think a little extra effort on behalf of the student is a bad thing to say why they want to be there. And make sure they really do have that burning desire, and it's not a helicopter mom or a pushy mom. You know, mine were singing in church at 3:00. So what can I say?
I was just going to make a suggestion about the sibling issue, because I completely agree that I think we need to figure out a way to handle that. And I was just going to say, you know, we've got the sibling transfer for ESE students. Maybe we could have a sibling transfer for magnet students, or magnet program students, not magnet schools, because I think that that's a different ball of wax, but maybe, as you said, that this could be handled in a different place, and maybe a transfer, a magnet transfer would be one of those things you could do. Because it certainly does make sense, and when you look at kids in the same household, if, whether they're stepchildren or whatever, if you've got one that got in, and then you've got to figure out, well, how are we going to get this kid to school in the morning at the same time? And, you know, it's just, it's a nightmare for parents to try to figure. And then what might end up happening is the child that got the opportunity doesn't get to do it, because it just doesn't work out for the family if you can't figure it out. So, yeah, so maybe that's something we could think about for that. Thank you.
Member Sal Manca.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I agree. I think overall, the sentiment up here is that we should make it easier, not harder, for siblings to stay together and for that to work. I think the worst-case scenario is for a parent to choose not to have a student go to a magnet school, because the other student is in another place, and transportation's a nightmare, and that's difficult. So you mentioned how for internal staff, perhaps, you can have that transfer of magnet program versus magnet school, but we don't necessarily have that available to parents as well, is one of the examples you gave. Is that right?
So as for magnet school, OGA, Howard, and Hillcrest, which are completely magnet, the only transfer that is not magnet is, to those schools, are staff onsite. So if I work at one of those schools, I can bring my child to that school.
It feels kind of weird that that's the only transfer in, that it's a staff transfer. I have to think about that. I have to think about how I feel about that. But obviously, I'm supportive of the staff transfer, but to the earlier arguments of keeping the siblings together, it feels like that one's not optimizing for the siblings together. But I understand that not all siblings are the same. To the application point, I have so many thoughts about this topic, I could talk about it forever. I think I was in school when OCPS made the change on AP classes, and kind of free-for-all or not, not the gatekeeping that there was. or not, not the gatekeeping that there was. And I think overall, my learnings through K through 12 have been that if you're applying to a magnet school as is, you already have an equity problem, because transportation's not included. And very few of our families even know what a magnet school is, and very few of our families even know what a magnet program is. So I think my biggest concern always has been with magnet schools and these programs is that if you are even applying to begin with, you already have a head start on knowledge. So for that reason, I don't think adding an additional one of an application and that is helpful, because I just think it's just another friction point that is harder. I think my concern has always been, what do we do as a district to identify these students that should be applying or that should be considering? Because I think that's, right, I don't know how the process is for the gifted school, right? But my guess is certain parents know that there's a gifted school, and they really want their kid to go there, and they're competitive, and they want to go there. But I don't know, are we looking at our low-income, high-achieving kids who have no idea that this school exists, and are we telling them, hey, you should apply? And so I think my problem with access comes from the point of even access to information to begin with. I had no idea that there was ever a gifted program, like, school on its own, or that there was all these different magnet schools. Maybe we are doing a better job at informing our parents and students since then. But I actually think it requires a bit more outreach and proactive work for some of our students. So, yeah, those are my general thoughts. I have a lot more thoughts.
Before we move off of this, though, on the gifted, not necessarily the gifted school, but one of the things that OCPS does do is...
Universal screening.
Okay, you knew that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that. But in terms of the school or magnet programs...
No, that's fine. I just wasn't...
Yes, we do do universal screening. Oh, totally. Yeah.
Member Castor Dental.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to get back to the question about the strands at Hillcrest, really. And I don't think you should have to pigeonhole both kids into the same language track. And I think with this policy, you're just trying to target the twins and triplets and making it fair for them, not that we're excluding other kinds of siblings or families. So I think we should remain flexible. I think that is what's best for the students, so. This is an interesting discussion, but I'm going to stop there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Member Castor Dental. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be quick, because we still have another review of the budget, and we only have 45 minutes. I agree with Pam. I think whenever we can accommodate students in any way that we can accommodate them, we should do so, and we should do so with a smile on our face, because I think over the next few years, what we're going to see is a decrease in enrollment in our schools, because there is so much choice. And if we're not the choice that they want, or we make it difficult for us to be the choice that they want, then we'll further erode the students that we have. So we should always start from a place from yes. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Felder.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I believe you probably kind of mentioned when I was out, but I just want to weigh in on a concern I have. And I have been talking to Ms. Neal and Greg Moody. We're talking about the siblings in terms of how the language. You have a sibling that's in a magnet program and has already been accepted, and you have another sibling who has not been accepted in the magnet program at the same school, when there's a real serious language barrier. I haven't heard that yet. Like, they may be in the ELL classes, but the language barrier is extreme. And Ms. Neal and I and Mr. Moody, they've been working with me with the Vietnamese family that, so, and it could be with other families, with other languages also. But I think that when they're elementary school, like a first grader coming in, and the brother or the sister is maybe a fifth grader, and then they've been accepted in a magnet program, but the younger one hasn't, and I just think that opportunity to bond, I just think that, I just, I'm reminded of our superintendent, when she said she came over here from Cuba, she didn't know a word of English, and she sat on her steps and cried all day, because she couldn't understand what people were saying. So as we revisit, Ms. Neal and Mr. Moody, the language of how we do transfers and within our magnet program or schools that may have magnet programs in there or magnet schools that we also consider that situation. I don't know how you're going to word it, but I would hate to be in first grade. I had a brother in fifth, and they're going to middle school, and I'm still left at that elementary school, and I don't have any friends other than my brother, my sister, and I just think that we just have to, if we could consider that, especially if the parents have an English language barrier along with the children. So I am in favor of trying to keep siblings, especially when they're young. High school, sometimes it's much more easier to be accommodating to children who don't speak the English language, but when they're little, kindergarten and first grade and so forth, elementary, I think it's very, very difficult. So I needed you to, I needed to weigh in on that, so you could know my thoughts as it relates to that. All right? Thank you so much.
All right. To close this out, for anybody who may have tuned in, we already have built into our policies a preference for families. We have a preference language if you already have one student in that magnet program and a younger student is coming up. And that makes a lot of sense. We've spent so much time talking about multiples, twins, and anybody watching, I don't want them to misunderstand and think that we're trying to give a greater preference. What we found in this particular situation, and I'm sure there have been many of them, is the reason for allowing the younger sibling to follow the older sibling is to keep that family unit together. And when you don't allow twins that same, you're actually kind of discriminating because they're twins, not intentionally. And that's what we were trying to address in the policy, not to give twins an advantage just to equalize the playing field. In terms of if you are a younger twin and your, or a younger sibling and the older sibling goes off to middle school, the parent has the right to put their child back in his own school. So I think we're in a pretty good place. I want to thank the board for really rich conversation and for, I think, Member Castor Dental stumped the... Go ahead.
I just wanted to summarize my marching orders before I leave the table. I think I've captured maybe four. Castor Dental spoke about including, expanding that language to include stepbrothers, stepsisters in the same household, same grade level.
Yes.
In the multiple births. And she stepped out, but I'll follow up with her individually to make sure I've captured that. Chair Jacobs had talked about the word "may," looking at how many times we use that and changing that language.
And also, outside of this, might be in a different policy, but a child being able to come to that school but not in the magnet.
Correct. And then the third one is the, what I deemed a sibling transfer for a magnet program, so that if a student is in a magnet program, if the school has space, we might be able to write into this language a sibling transfer to that school. And then I will explore what we can do at some of our magnet schools, Howard in particular. A member Golds mentioned why are kids there? So I'll explore how we can capture that in the coming near future.
All right. Thank you. Yes. All right. Let me go to you, Dr. Armbruster. Take us from here.
We are prepared to present the FEFP review, if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
We know we're on a tight timeline. She guarantees me she can get it done. I can't guarantee y'all will get the conversation done afterwards, but she can get the presentation
Good afternoon, Chair Jacobs, Deputy Superintendent and Board Members. Today's presentation, as requested by the board, provides a deeper look into the Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP, the timeline for funding adjustments, the formula components, and then a handout that identifies OCPS funding. I appreciate the opportunity to share this information with the board and our community. And if there is not enough time for questions and discussion, I am happy to meet with anybody What is the Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP? The FEFP was established in 1973 and is the primary mechanism for funding operating costs in Florida school districts. The FEFP does not include funds for construction. A key feature of the FEFP is that it bases financial support for education upon the individual student participating in a particular educational program. The FEFP is equalized, which means that programs and services are substantially equal to those available to any similar student, notwithstanding geographic differences and varying local economic factors. The FEFP is comprised of both state and local revenues. The predominant state tax source is the 6% sales tax on goods and services. To be eligible to receive FEFP funding, each kindergarten through grade 12 student must meet membership and attendance requirements. This includes the student who's officially assigned to a course or program. The school captures the student course schedule during survey week on date certain, and each student must be in attendance for a minimum of one day during the attendance window. The Florida Administrative Code provides that during the year, at least four FTE student membership surveys are conducted. In addition to the four surveys, Survey Five collects end-of-year student academic data. The FEFP is calculated five times each year. The first calculation uses projected FTE and estimated tax roll. Enrollment data, property role adjustments, prior year funding adjustments, or statewide reductions are reflected in subsequent FEFP calculations. An FTE for FEFP funding purposes is one student in membership in one or more FEFP programs for a school year. Program cost factors are based on the relative cost differences between education programs. As we know, not all education programs cost the same to provide. There are seven statutorily established education programs. Through the annual program cost report, districts report the expenditures for each FEFP program that are used to produce an index of costs. In order to minimize the fluctuation in program cost factors, the Florida Legislature typically uses a three-year average in computing cost factors. Here we have the fiscal year 2025 program cost factors that are determined by the legislature and represent cost differences among the FEFP programs. Classification into a program other than basic requires proper qualification of students, for example, an IEP, proper qualification of the teacher, relevant certification, and appropriate subject matter in accordance with the Florida Administrative Code. ESE students who are not classified in Programs 254 or 255 are reported in the appropriate basic program with ESE services. Additional funding for these students is provided through the ESE guaranteed allocation in the FEFP formula. Base funding in the FEFP is generated by multiplying the number of unweighted FTE students in each education program by the appropriate cost factor to obtain weighted FTE students. Weighted FTE students are then multiplied by a base student allocation, or BSA, as determined by the legislature, and then multiplied by the district comparable wage factor to determine base funding from state and local funds. The comparable wage factor is tied to the Florida Price Index to reflect the cost of hiring staff subject to local labor market wage pressures. The base student allocation, or BSA, which is a key component of the district's base funding, is the most flexible funding bucket for school districts and used to pay for general operating costs such as utilities, healthcare costs, and other operational expenses. As mentioned in previous presentations, increase to the BSA have not kept up with rising costs, but historically, these funds could be utilized at the district's discretion. In fiscal year '24, there was an overhaul to the FEFP formula. Four state funding categories were rolled into the BSA to provide more flexibility, yet the requirements for spending these funds remain as originally intended. The total increase in the BSA for fiscal year 2025 is $191.25 per unweighted FTE. Of this total, $77.51, or 41% of the increase to the BSA, will go towards complying with state funding requirements. As noted on this slide, $71.15 per unweighted FTE of new funding is to be utilized for the teacher salary increase allocation. This is the equivalent of approximately $14 million that is to be shared with charter schools, and will fund a portion of the costs of the 3% salary increase that was fronted for 2025. Using the same methodology, instructional materials increased $3.33 per unweighted FTE. Likewise, reading dollars account for $2.30 per unweighted FTE. Classroom teacher supply dollars account for $0.73 per unweighted FTE of the total base increase. In all, $77.51 of the $191.25 increase to the BSA, or 41% of the increase, needs to go towards those four category requirements. These state funding categories are funds to address specific types of student populations or needs, geographic issues, or specific educational initiatives. These state funding categories are referred to as categorical funds. Let's look at these individually. Discretionary millage compression. The legislature determines the non-voted operating discretionary millage that is used to calculate a discretionary millage compression supplement. If the prescribed millage generates an amount of funds per unweighted FTE for the district that is less than the state average, the district will receive a supplement amount per FTE that, when added to the funds generated by the levy, will equal the state average. School districts, the virtual school and lab schools, participate in these calculations. Let's look at an example of Union County versus Orange County. A levy of .748 in Union County equals $132.20 per unweighted FTE. The state average this year is $813.19 per unweighted FTE. Union County will receive an additional allocation of $680.99 per unweighted FTE. A levy of .748 in Orange County equals $758.15 per unweighted FTE. Again, the state average, $813.19 per unweighted FTE. An additional allocation of $55.04 per weighted FTE will be provided to Orange County. And in our FEFP calculation, that is an extra $12.4 million. The Department of Juvenile Justice allocation. Funding on the basis of FTE membership beyond the 180-day regular term is provided in the FEFP for students enrolled in juvenile justice education programs or for juveniles placed in secure facilities or programs. Twenty-six school districts receive this allocation, including Orange County Public Schools. The Educational Enrichment allocation. These dollars were previously named the Supplemental Academic Instruction Funds. The Educational Enrichment allocation assists school districts in providing educational enrichment activities and services to support academic achievement. For district-managed turnaround schools, a suppo- For district-managed turnaround schools, a supplemental amount is added to the district's educational enrichment allocation for implementing the intervention and support strategies identified in the turnaround plan submitted. All school districts, lab schools, and the virtual schools receive the Educational Enrichment allocation. The E S C guaranteed allocation provides for educational programs and services for exceptional students who are not in Programs 254 and 255. An E S C student without the highest need could be a speech, S L D, or gifted student. These exceptional students also receive weighted F T E funding in the F E F P using the appropriate basic program weights for their grade level. District allocations are recalculated during the year based on actual student membership from F T E surveys. All school districts, lab schools, and the Florida Virtual School receive this allocation. The federally connected student supplement was created to provide supplemental funding for school districts to support the education of students connected with federally-owned military installations, National Aeronautics and Space Administration property, and Indian lands. To be eligible for this supplement, the district must be eligible for federal impact aid program funds. Thirteen districts receive this allocation, however not Orange County Public Schools. The Mental Health Assistance Allocation. Each school district receives a minimum of $100,000, and the remaining balance is distributed proportionately to districts based on their total unweighted student enrollment. Charter schools are eligible to receive their proportionate share of the district's allocation. The allocated funds may not supplant other operating funds and may not be used to increase salaries or provide bonuses. The Safe Schools Allocation. Each district receives a minimum $250,000 Safe Schools allocation. Of the remaining balance, 1/3 is allocated to school districts based on the most recent official Florida Crime Index provided by the Department of Law Enforcement, and 2/3 is allocated based on each school district's proportionate share of the state's total unweighted F T E student enrollment. All school districts, Florida Virtual School, and lab schools receive the Mental Health allocation, and all district and lab schools, with the exception of Florida Virtual School, receive the Safe Schools allocation. Developmental Research Schools, or lab schools, at state universities are classified for funding as special school districts, as is the Florida Virtual School. Because these special districts have no taxing authority, the state provides the same dollar amount per student for the .748 discretionary operating millage revenues as is generated for district students. Special districts are funded entirely with state funds. Student Transportation Allocation. The F E F P formula specifies funding for student transportation to support school districts and charter schools in providing safe and efficient transportation services. Funds are used primarily to transport students who live more than two miles from school, students with disabilities whose individualized education plan requires transportation, students enrolled in teenage parent programs, and students whose walk to school is considered hazardous in grades K through six only. Funding is based on enrollment and adjusted by other factors. In O C P S, the F E F P transportation allocation is deficient in meeting the district's needs and represents only 47% of our total expenses. The sum of the previous funding categories equals the gross state and local F E F P. Next, the Required Local Effort, or R L E. The Legislature prescribes the aggregate required local effort for all school districts collectively for each fiscal year. Using the certified tax roll from the Florida Department of Revenue, the Commissioner computes and certifies the local effort millage rate that each district is required to levy. A proration to appropriation. The next component in the F E F P calculation is any proration to appropriation. If the funds appropriated in the F E F P are not sufficient to pay the state requirement in full, the Department prorates the available state funds to each district. This occurs when actual enrollment is higher than projection resulting in less funding available per student, or state revenue is less than projected. Net State F E F P. To obtain the net State F E F P, the calculation takes the gross state and local dollars, less the required local effort, plus any adjustments. The result is the net State F E F P. Family Empowerment Scholarship Program. The next component, the Family Empowerment Scholarship Program, or F E S, is established to provide children and families with educational options through scholarship vouchers. The state-funded discretionary supplement is created to fund the discretionary millage for students awarded a family empowerment scholarship. There is no taxing authority for family empowerment scholarship, and therefore, funds for the discretionary supplement are appropriated from state funds. The calculation is similar to the discretionary contribution calculation for lab schools and the Florida Virtual School. Class Size Reduction Allocation. State program funds are added to the F E F P allocation. Currently, the only state program categorical fund is class size reduction allocation. As a result of the voter-approved class size reduction amendment to the Florida Constitution, additional funds are appropriated to assist districts in their efforts to meet class size requirements. The class size reduction categorical is funded exclusively from state funds. The established limits are 18 students in pre-K through grade three classrooms, 22 students in grades four through eight classrooms, 25 students in grades nine through 12 classrooms. This year, due to instructional vacancies statewide, the financial penalty imposed on districts that do not meet class size was waived. Total state funding support to school districts is provided primarily by legislative appropriations, is distributed through the F E F P, and comes predominantly from the 6% sales tax on goods and services. Total local funding, local revenue for school support, is derived most entirely from property taxes levied by Florida's 67 school districts. Each school board participating in the state allocation of funds for the operation of schools must levy the millage set for its required local effort from property taxes. Total state plus local funding equals the F E F P. Now, the Board has some handouts there which may make it easier to see these slides. Now we'll apply dollars to the funding components. On this slide, each box represents one of the elements of the F E F P calculation, and the result is the district's F E F P funding from the first calculation or conference report. Note that the total is $1,999,185,674. Now, if we look at the second handout that says O C P S 2024-25 up top, here is the same information displayed in spreadsheet format. This format is utilized when calculating the total dollars the district receives through the F E F P, as well as to isolate the funding by traditional charter and scholarship students. You will see in the first column that the total agrees with the previous slide. This is the same calculation displayed vertically. It is vital that charter school and scholarship funding be removed in order to determine the total dollars available for traditional schools and to determine whether there's any new funding available. As I often point out during budget presentations, the district does not receive scholarship funds. In this instance, the $195,506 allocated for F E S and reflected in the last column are included in our total F E F P revenue appropriation. However, because we never received the funds, these dollars are not included in our year-end financial reporting of revenue or expenditure results. Someone not familiar with the calculations may perceive that the district is over-budgeting or under-reporting. Now, on this final handout, the Board requested a three-year history of funding. This comparison only includes traditional school funding as these dollars impact our district's operations. The last column reflects the variance from the fourth calculation of the current 2024 fiscal year to the first calculation or conference report for the 2025 fiscal year. Currently, there appears to be an increase of $52.3 million. The second calculation to be released in mid-July, just prior to the tentative budget hearing, will provide updated property values, prior period adjustments, and any other modifications to funding. But let's go back to the recognized $52.3 million increase in funding, which is equivalent to a 3.3% increase. It does seem as if the district will realize an increase in funding to offset the fronted 3% of the 9% salary increase provided in the 2024 fiscal year. I'd also like to remind the Board that there are other recurring obligations that will be added to the 2025 operating budget, and that figures will be finalized with the release of the second calculation. And now, we welcome any questions or comments.
Let me start by saying excellent job. Excellent, excellent job. I've never, I've seen so many lengthy presentations, but I've never seen anybody summarize it and bring it together like that. And of course, part of it is you talk really fast, so that was helpful. And thank you for giving us the notes, so that...
Do you have the notes?
It was in the PowerPoint presentation.
No, but there was, we have packets for everybody.
The PowerPoint presentation, the written version, had the notes at the bottom of each slide.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, we'll make sure that you get it, okay? Anyway, excellent job. And Member Gould, okay, she got it.
Good, thank you.
That's all right. She just did that to make me look better or feel better, yeah. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
We spent time assembling it all. I would hope that you would have them.
All right, and now to Member Gould.
You referred to the three-year cost-price index. What three years shaped the 24-25 budget? And I think it's Slide 7, when you're talking about...
Those are the program costs. So what I'm referring to actually is on Slide 8, those program cost factors. We submit a program cost report every year that breaks down the cost of educating students by program, and then the DOE uses that data to produce these cost factors, and they average that over three years, so there's not a great fluctuation.
Okay, so it's our direct expenses based on an underfunded budget. It's not like C P I, it's not Consumer Price Index and the inflation in the state. Is that what you're saying? So you said it's an index that influences these numbers. That index is based on the expenses we have with the budget that we were given to spend, not based on need for what, or increases in costs?
Correct, and it is the average of the 67 districts, not just Orange County.
That still doesn't pull in, you know...
I understand, yes.
You know, the inflationary rate that we've seen. And we may have given up something to stay within budget.
Absolutely.
So it doesn't, I think that's a useless index, but anyway. There's two things that I wanted to share that we heard from legislatures at the F S B A. And one is, they are going to do a study to see if we no longer use property taxes as one of our funding mechanisms, and it all goes to sales tax. And here's my concern about that. While, yes, we are a big beneficiary of tourists, our frontline workers, not just O C P S frontline workers, but when you look at any frontline and just starting-out worker, if they're taking up to make up the bandwidth of a full tail sales tax for all of schools or infrastructure, I can't imagine what our sales tax would need to be, but I guess the research will tell us that. And then, they also said that there was discussion, I guess, of putting the R L E back into control of the local districts, which would be fantastic. Now, I don't know who that discussion was with and if it has any merit, but boy, would we be in favor of that.
Yes, yes.
Well, okay, so it was, thank you, Member Gal, she said it was the Senate. But that, you know, that would be great, as long as it's not a carrot in the stick. And again, we still don't have proper funding for education, and we remain 50th in the country. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Gould. Member Gal, Vice Chair Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question that I've always, I get confused on each year. So when we do the F T E surveys or the accounts, like the first one is within the first 10 days of school, the second one is usually in October, and then the third one is in February. But is there a benchmark that we have to meet in order to get dollars back for students? So for example, do we have to get like over 1% of our population in order for the state to send us? No?
No, so let's first start with the September count. The September or August, depending on how it falls with the start of school, is the 10-day or 12-day enrollment count. Again, depends on how it falls the day's layout. That is strictly a warm-body head count, where we try to shift resources depending on where the kids actually showed up. In October and in February are the second and third actual F T E surveys. That's where we're looking at the students and the programs they're in, and then that gets multiplied by that cost factor that I showed that chart, and we get weighted F T E. What determines whether or not we get funding? And really, our funding begins to shift after the second, after the second survey, we get the third calculation around January, February, which shows us the results from the October survey. We have a forecast that we're reaching for. If we reach that forecast, great. If we fall below it, our funding is adjusted down, and if we exceed it, our funding is adjusted up.
So for that February calc, that's when it would be, or the F T E count in February, that would be adjusted up or down, depending on if we met our forecast?
There's surveys, and then there's calculations.
Okay, I'm talking about the survey, because the survey is, the calculation comes from the data in the survey.
Correct, so the, excuse me, October survey, right, will generate the third calc, which by the time they do everything that they do, we get those results around January, February. But then we have the February survey, and then we get the fourth F E F P calculation, and we get that, we just got that in May. We got that about last week.
Okay, is that the last, the one we get in May, is that the last calculation we get, or is there one more during the summer?
There is a final, but for all intents and purposes, most of what we do is driven off when we're looking at fourth calc, like the analysis we provided you. It's the fourth calc results to what the new funding looks like in the next year.
Okay, and then I know others want to ask questions. So offline, I do want to talk to you about what happened with Hurricane Maria hit, and how, why was it, if that's the case, why was it so hard for us to get money? Because we were being told that we had to go over like that 1%, which we were never going to get, and then federal dollars had to come in to kind of make us whole for all those students. But we'll talk, we could talk offline.
Okay.
Because that scenario is what's confusing me.
And I believe what you're referring to, and I'm going to do a little more research to make sure that I answer correctly, but what you're referring to is another survey. If there's more than a 1% change, then you can request from the Commissioner another survey for the district.
Okay, couple really simple questions, or basic questions. How often do we get, do we get funding from the state? Do we get funding every month? Like, kind of think of it only twice a year?
Twice a month.
Twice a month, okay, so kind of like a paycheck.
And it, it varies.
Okay, so in October, we've got a count, a calculation, and we're getting funding for the students that we know of in October. Come February, if the numbers are lower in February, we still get to keep all the money that we had for the kids in October?
Well, what the state does is they look at it in total, and then they will adjust our F E F P funding, and then our payments would begin to decrease.
So what I'm getting at is if we have, we have 100 students... So what I'm, what I'm getting at is if we have, we have 100 students in October, and by February, 50 of them have moved out of the state. Now we got only 50 students. But for, from October to December, we had 100 students. Do they consider all that?
Yeah, they'll, they'll reduce our, our funding.
Moving forward.
Correct.
But not going backwards.
But they look at the whole year. It's a calculation for the entire year.
Okay. One other question. Is there a reason for not putting the TSA, making it a categorical? There may be some reason why it's slightly different than a categorical that is not clear to me.
The teacher salary increase allocation? It's in the BSA now. That was one of the four categoricals that got rolled into the BSA.
Right, what I'm asking is there a reason that they just don't keep it separate as a categorical? I'm not sure you're aware of, okay. All right, Member Salamanca.
I got an answer.
Okay, thank you. Member Ferrant.
I just wanted to say thank you again for this. It was very well explained.
Thank you.
And this is not easy to explain. It is so complicated. I've been in all sorts of different meetings trying to understand and just really get a grasp of it. I think I'm definitely a visual learner, and your graph paired with a spreadsheet is super duper helpful. So I really appreciate that, and the three-year comparison as well, just so we can kind of see how this is trending. My question would be with the new funding that is going to be given to schools for, it was like 1.2 billion? Do you happen to know what that will equate to for Orange County?
So it's, it's in total, over the years that the teacher salary increase allocation, the, no, I'm probably not saying that correctly. The, the increase for the current year, it's 200 million dollars, and for us, it's 14 million. The 1.2 billion is looking at, they always, the DOE, the state always provides funding to maintain the raises that have been given, but that's not new money. The new money is only the 200 million. In total, it's 1.25 billion.
So it's minus plus growth?
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
So like it would have, if you take out the 200, you just said 200 million? Oh, there's too many numbers. Take out the 200 million, that whatever that number is, that would, that would just be what you're typically, we're going to get that anyways.
All, all districts across the state, correct.
Not, not Orange County.
Correct.
That would be amazing.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
So it's not 1.2 billion?
So for us here in Orange County, it would be an additional 14 million.
We are getting an additional 14 million that we have to share with charter schools with their proportionate share.
Yes, and it's not in this spreadsheet, correct? Because that's like brand new. It's, that'll be additional.
The reason it's not in the spreadsheet...
Well, well, and it just happened.
It's because it's part of the BSA now. It's not separate.
It is in these dollars.
Yes.
So, Member Ferrant, this, that's not, like, the way the, the news is reporting it, it sounds like this just happened, and bada-boom, there's 1.3 billion dollars or whatever it is. Just, that's how it's sounding to people.
So if you look at the three-year history, Juz, can you go to that, to the slide? I think that's the last handout. If you look at the three-year history in 2023 in that first column, you could go down to the teacher salary increase allocation was 54.5 million dollars. But then you don't see an allocation in 2024 or in 2025 because it's now included in the BSA. And that's what we were saying last year. The BSA appeared to have increased significantly, but four categorical funds were rolled into the BSA, including the teacher salary increase allocation.
I get it. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
All right, we're going, we're going to end on time. Member Felder.
Always appreciate the work you all do, but I don't know whether board members know this, and I hope I'm doing it right. Doreen was recognized and honored by the pineapple people at the Florida School Board.
Thank you. It is a collaborative effort. Thank you, Board Member Felder.
Yes, that's a, that's a great recognition.
Thank you.
I think we had someone last year from charter schools to, to get that honor, and I felt so good about that, Doreen, because I often describe you to people walking over fire, trying to make sure we have our monies right. And we're so very proud of you, Doreen, and thank you for all the work that you all do. And I, you know, and I say this all the time, but it's a poor frog that won't praise his own palm.
Oh, my gosh, Cat is coming back.
Yes. So I am going to...
He's channeling Cat right now.
Give honor to whom, honor is due, and you are due that. So I just have one question about the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And we, we talked about the monies and so forth, and, and I had a long, lengthy conversation with Scott Howard, trying to help me understand about the matrix of how they give money to districts has not been changed since 1999. So, and I see how you're working the magic, whatever you're doing to try to make sure we understand about the monies, but again, I think teachers do understand the importance of FTE and the fact that you have to, that first one, you have to just warm bodies, but it's so important. So I think one of the other board members, I don't know if it was Board Member Gallo, okay, we get the money when the kid, the 50 kids have come. What about the 50 kids that leave, and then they come back? Do we get money for them?
It depends if they were sitting in that seat during survey week in October and survey week in February.
So if they were sitting there in October and February, we'll get money for them, but if they were not, we lose that money?
Well, if they were sitting in that seat for, for one of the two surveys, then we would get a portion of the funding.
Okay, you know, because my concern is that a lot of times they leave, and based on what we have there, we don't have the money, then they all come back, and do we have money for them? And you're saying only if they were sitting, and only a portion of the money?
Correct, correct. If they were not in seats in October survey, during October survey and February survey, we would not get full funding for that student. Even if they were with us up until survey week in October, they left for two weeks, a month, and came back, so technically, they're with us for the whole year, but we would not get half a year of funding for them because they were not present during that survey window in October.
Okay, that doesn't sit well with me. But I'm sure I'm not the only one that doesn't sit well with, but I needed to express that to let you know, I'm not happy about that, but I do appreciate the, the jumping through hoops and all that you guys do to make us, help us to understand, as Board Member Ferrant said, this is not an easy thing to understand. But I thank you for the efforts you all put to make sure that we understand. And again, Doreen, congratulations for your wonderful work. Thank you.
All right, Member Castredal. I thought we were going to land on time. Let's see how it goes.
Sorry. I'll make it quick, but thank you for your presentation. This is, this can be difficult to understand. I had one of my doctoral classes in the FEFP, and so there are a lot of intricate parts. I'm wondering if, if you would be able to explain at another time how the loss of students affects our ability to run a school? Like if you were to just look at, just at a school level, if that's supposed to have 600 students, and as we slowly lose students, we still have the same fixed costs for running the school, yet we don't get the same funding? And how that stresses, and we have to stretch, or how we have to pull back on services for that school? I think that that would be important information for people to understand as we're looking at this drop in enrollment, and as people are leaving and taking vouchers to private schools, what that, the consequences for our schools in, in the way it really affects a class in a school.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You are welcome.
All right, by Apple time. We had two seconds. Bada-boom, we're done.
Thank you.
We are going to take a very short break, and we'll be back in, hopefully in about five minutes.